And this time I have a roll call.
Commissioner Vesterfield Shepherd. Commissioner Isaac Owens. Commissioner Jay Wesley Rainey. Commissioner Vice Chair Ross Reed Senior. Chairman Joshua Derosa.
Uh, President, thank you so much. Let it reflect. Do you have a call? All right. At this time, um, do we have a motion approved of today's agenda?
Uh.
Sir. It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the agenda for today. Uh, all in favor, let me know by voiceful aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Agenda is approved for today's meeting. Approval of regular minute meetings from August sixth meeting. Do we have a motion?
Uh huh. Sir.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the regular minute meetings from August sixth two thousand twenty four. All in favor, let me know by voiceful aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Minutes approved. I see we have a speaker appearance, but I do not see Mr. Holly. So I'm assuming we won't have that uh him come forward, okay? And we don't have anyone um on the agenda items. Okay, all right. With that said, we'll go into our department head goals and accomplishments. Um, fresh up, he's popping up this here. How you doing this morning? Community announcement.
How's everybody doing this morning? Been a little busy out there, but that's a good thing. Uh. Initially, uh, I'd like to tell you that we went to a propel meeting. Um, these were a committee group meeting on the ninth. And there were a number of things discussed and we're looking at um infrastructure projects, housing projects, business development, a few other things. Um, so know that propel is moving forward. Uh. I've registered for multiple housing uh conferences. Like at the behest of uh Ms. Reading, I thank you for that. So it's uh, DCA is having a virtual housing um supportive housing initiative on the nineteenth. And also a community planning institute on second and third. Uh, the Georgia Land Bank Association or Authority um has a meeting on the twenty second. Planning seed is what they call it. Uh, River Valley Regional Commission has a uh housing symposium, middle region housing symposium on the twenty ninth. I'll be attending that. And the UGA um in Athens has a geek conference on October fifteenth to seventeenth. I will be in attendance there with. Um, excited to talk, tell you about the land bank. We had a uh meeting uh on last Thursday and one of the things that I have given the commission is a flyer that looks similar to this. And what that is, is a program that I'm, a campaign I want to do, twenty five by twenty five. And what that is, take twenty five lighted properties in the city of Cordeal, run them through the land bank and put them back online by twenty twenty five. Utilizing a number of things like the housing um voucher program, which gives ten thousand dollars to each individual for down payment and closing the systems. Also, there's an element to this that allows for either businesses or organizations like the Mines Club, the Monas Club to sponsor a portion of this housing program. So a- as an example, if they want to paint, if they have to paint the home, they could get a group of people to help reduce their cost by the sponsorship. So you get ten, twenty people over. If your cost for painting is five thousand, that sponsorship reduces your overall cost to the homeowner by about five thousand dollars. If anybody's interested in information about that, please let us know. And uh, if you want to sponsor or you're interested in a home. Uh. Had a meeting with the faith-based community on uh August eighth, exciting some of the things that they're looking to do. And then a meeting with the homeless coalition on the twenty first. And then um, the very last thing is I'm working with the codes department to identify people that are having issues with homes if they're out of state and just want to get rid of the home or if they want to have the home repaired. So again, if you're a homeowner and you want to get the, keep the house and have it repaired, call. If you want to sell the house, call. If you're interested in donating the house to the land bank, call. Call me for it. That's about it for me. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Hill? All right. Thank you, Mr. Hill. Appreciate what you're doing. Uh, finance department, how you doing?
You have a copy of the report. Not much to add, but I would like to point out that we are continuing to collect more delinquent property taxes. They had over a hundred thousand dollars in July, but that includes penalties and fees. That's all I have.
Any questions for our finance department? Saying that, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That's this flyer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Goals and accomplishments, as always, to provide the best possible service to citizens of this Cordeal. Uh, we are preparing for ISO to be in town. They'll be here October eighth to do our five-year assessment. Um, and we're looking forward to contracting with Becker Solutions for our annual training. As far as accomplishments, we're getting firefighter Jones ready for his firefighter one hazmat certification. That'll be a dipstick. That's going to start in September and will run through November. Um, I had the opportunity to speak to the faith-based organization at Community Clubhouse last week. I want to thank them for that, thankful for what they do in this city. Uh, we attended the quarterly TMS meeting, which is traffic incident management at EMA last week. And then we're working to change our alert tone. Our alert tone is the same as the sheriff's department and I believe the police department uses for their high alert. And so a lot of times they don't scan our calls. We want them to have the ability to scan our calls because if they're in the area, we would use their assistance. So that's all I have.
Any questions for our fire chief? Thank you, Chief.
I have one question, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, you said we did October before you started putting the virus on the job this year?
That's September. That'll be next month.
Okay. And you got any about the homes yet?
We have not. Working with the Red Cross, we got fifty smoke papers that we're putting out. It'll be a Saturday in September. I had to double check on that date, but I can get it for you. Okay, this time.
All right, thank you. All right. Next is um housing and development, which is what I'm doing this morning.
In my report this morning, goals and accomplishments for the Board of Zoning Appeals. The Board of Zoning Appeals will meet on Thursday, August twenty second, twenty twenty four at ten a.m. The monthly meetings are scheduled for the fourth Thursday of each month at ten a.m. And uh, the chip program. The Southwest Georgia Regional Commission staff and the city Cordeal staff members have completed the re-votation work on one hall with a portion of the chip housing grant uh funds. And my last item on the report is for the Cordeal Plan and Zoning Commission meetings have been scheduled for the third Thursday of each month at ten a.m. Within the Cordeal House, within the Cordeal City Municipal Court. And that's all I have for this, this meeting.
Uh, any questions for Ms. Contral? Saying that, thank you, Ms. Contral. All right, next up is Mr. Wade. Resources, how you doing? Good, good.
Chairman, Mr. Morgan. You have my report in your packet. I'm just gonna highlight a few areas on here. Um, begin with under the recruitment goal. If you had the opportunity to watch the fire department recruitment video, Mr. Smart and Chief Allegretti together, that's part of the starts with me campaign that was uh supplied under the hot dog with the uh jobs for purpose municipal workforce development initiative. So uh, we're starting to use those materials. Um, since our last report, we've acquired a few positions. We've had distribution mechanic in both water and sewer, water and sewer and gas departments field, utility billing clerk in the finance department, codes enforcement officer in police, and two firefighters. As of yesterday, we also extended a conditional offer to a mechanic in the uh, in the shop. The Go Sun Smart Georgia campaign uh is in full swing. All the educational materials have been received. They've been disseminated to the employees. Uh, some of those in uh materials are also being used on the C's use letter. And I have a phone uh conference Thursday, the twenty second at eleven a.m. with Irene, excuse me, Ajay at Emory University for the second half of that program. And in conjunction with that, um, we have a, a model um sun safety outdoor work policy that's being developed that we hope to put in place here in the future. Uh, once we get the information from Emory University as far as their recommendations. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Wade? Saying that, thank you, Mr. Wade. Next is municipal court.
Those were the municipal courts to um report accurate and complete information for the court and public. Complete um court document for the judge and the time and matter. And it should have been first to pass a, I've got a seizure audit for the court on the twenty ninth. And um it's been rough, but we're, we're doing it. And I still thank Lisa Odom and my deputy clerk, Ms. Crook. Um, we've been working on it and we think we're gonna be good. The accomplishments is all doctors in court disposition for turning in, turning to the state on time. Um, and as always, um, the municipal court always the same because we continue to strive for the best for the court and the public. That's all I have.
Any questions for um Ms. Walker?
Yes.
I have a question. Police Department also be giving codes and animal uh check as well. How you doing, Chief?
I'm great. How are you?
Good.
Good. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
All right, uh, for the police department, um, well, everything actually, our, our goals remain the same throughout the year. Um, so you have my report in your packet, just some of the highlights. As far as community engagement, our um event committee is in the stages of planning the National Pet and Blue Weekend. Something we've been very um active in throughout the years, the last couple of years. Uh, as a reminder, that's October fourth through the seventh, and uh, so we're planning events for that. As far as uh some accomplishments, we have three applicants currently on our hiring process and we have a cadet that's in week five of the academy. That's all I have for police.
Any questions for police?
All right. As far as animal control, as far as community engagement and to increase adoptions, we're currently working on developing a like pet of the week type uh Facebook post where we highlight certain pets or animals um to try to get them adopted or bring awareness to the adoptions. Um, as far as uh more adoption-friendly environment, we're in the process of getting quotes to replace the antiquated lights at the shelters. At the shelters, excuse me, um, the lights that we currently have at the shelter, it just makes it difficult for them to, to clean it. Um, cleaning is still being done, but the new lights will allow it to be a lot easier and uh, so we're looking at quotes for that. As far as the computer system, we received a quote to get wireless internet. Uh, so we're looking to move forward with that and that will resolve our issue with the internet access out there. And the division, as far as uh working with veterinarians, uh local veterinarians, the host, different rabies and clinics, different events. We did receive a uh twelve hundred dollar grant uh for dog sterilization. I brought awareness to that in the last meeting. Uh, so we're looking to get with uh veterinary hospitals to distribute that money as far as uh sterilizations. That's all I have for animal control.
Any questions for animal control?
All right. Codes. Um, as far as training and certification, as I was bringing awareness to several commission meeting, um, commission meetings ago. Uh, there's a conference in September. Everybody's been signed up, so they're looking forward to go to that. Uh, we also are still implementing the new software, the new code software. Every Monday they have a training class and that's going well. Uh, again, it's a sixty day uh process and we're in week three of that, so we're moving along with that. Uh, also with that, we purchased some tablets and thermal printers to uh make your job more efficient. Uh, right now what they're having to do is every time they, they have to address an issue, they're having to come back to the department and enter in their reports and put notes. Whereas these tablets and thermal printers will help them be able to stay in the field more and uh be more efficient in their work. Um, so those are online now. And um, hopefully with this new system, it'll help them stay out there more. Um, and we've also issued uh last month seventeen total citations in regards to various code-related issues. Um, as Commissioner Rainey brought up the last meeting, that there are two um residential permits uh for single-family homes. One is on Quail Run and the other one is on Old Hatley Road. So that's positive, definitely positive. That's all I have for codes.
Any questions for codes? Saying that, thank you, sir. Good morning, Steve. How you doing? Public Works.
Uh, as far as our goals and accomplishments, we finished uh the public awareness program at the gas department and I wanted to comment on that. Uh, in years past, we paid an outside agency over twenty thousand dollars to do this function. Tina took it on her, on her own to do it herself and so that's saving us a good bit of money. Plus she's doing a really good job. And other than that, uh, we having a bid open on the offer grant, the first phase of offer grant this afternoon at two o'clock, Public Works. And that's all I have. Not many.
All right. Any questions for Public Works?
Just something, Sharon. Uh, the mower max, is it order? That order with the arm?
Not yet.
Not yet.
City manager.
Steve, the letter for G-Dot, um, that's in the uh packet for the chairman to sign.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, the uh letter, whether requesting permission uh to revote traffic uh on Seventh Street for maintenance of closing. Uh, railroad closing says X railroad crossing. So that is in the packet.
Right, Seventh Street, the, the two on Fifth Street is in Gold Sixteenth Avenue, back to Seventh Street.
And then uh, is the representative here from Birch Aviation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because uh, we had it at the top of the agenda, uh, Mr. Holly had questions regarding mosquito spreading. I provided that information to him, but he still wanted to uh speak before the commission, but since he's not here, um, I did ask Mr. uh the owner to be here for Birch Aviation so that he can explain the process for mosquito spreading. So is that okay?
Yes.
Um, David Rita, Birch Aviation. We make um two applications over the city of Cordeal. Um, trying to do it every other week. Um, and it's sprayed usually very early in the morning, probably get the mosquito when they're most active or late in the evening. Doesn't take me more than fifteen, twenty minutes to do a whole petition over the entire city. Um. Yeah, I usually set an A B line on the west side of the city and work my way east or vice versa. Um, I think the only confusion we had, last time I spoke with one of y'all was uh dealing with, I guess, Highlands, the golf course. I didn't realize that was part of the city limits that was being recovered, but yeah. No problem doing that. Yeah, if there's ever a area that's has worse mosquitoes than other, please let me know. I'll make additional passes for, for nothing. Just let me hold it down. Looking well. If you ever need reports or whatever, y'all may just let me know.
Thank you.
So we.
Any questions from anybody? Um, you said it takes about fifteen, twenty minutes to put the application over?
Yeah, I'm uh, my airplane's about a hundred fifty miles an hour, so it's pretty, move pretty quickly in the city. Um, earlier this month I had to deal with Georgia Tech Patrol was working over a part of west side of the city.
And now, um, and I'm asking this, you do it by plane? Okay, because when I was younger, it was a truck that came around. Yeah, and I think, because if you say, and I'm mostly doing this for the public so they'll understand, I think they may still be looking for that truck. And when you say fifteen to twenty minutes.
The huge, the huge benefit of the airplane, because I can get so much better coverage. I can get back into swamps and cover the whole city and do it quickly and efficiently and, and in and out and be as less, no, I don't want to be intrusive, you know?
That's right. That's right. Okay. So y'all got that. That's how it's done now. All right.
I think Commissioner Shepard, I just.
That's a.
Birch Aviation. Remember about the mosquitoes, Mr. Holly, so he just explained the process.
Go in and out.
Appreciate you, sir. All right, thank you. All right.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, uh, social media marketing. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair. Uh, the city commission, city manager ready? It is good to see everybody. My report will be brief just to update you on the uh uh, on the website and where we are on that. We still are hanging out in revision three. That's not a bad thing. Uh, the uh, the uh website committee came together Friday, August the ninth with the grandicus. Uh, there were some things that we wanted to see in the website, quite frankly, that we were not seeing. And so they were able to let us work in a sandbox with one of their uh top designers. We were able to see the changes being made in real time. When we left the meeting, we were very uh, very satisfied with what they did. There was one other thing that we wanted to see uh that they are continuing to work on. So we are still in that process, but I do want to stress that that's not a bad thing because of some of the things we were able to accomplish early. We're still on task. We are still on time, excuse me, still on time and very pleased uh with that process. Uh, the uh other thing that I will mention to you, David mentioned about the Cordeal Fire Department video that uh incorporated starts with me. I began work with the police department just about a week ago on some video and then Chief Hurd and I sat down yesterday and massaged a uh piece of script that we want to use for uh an initial video that we're going to be putting together for the police department. Excited about that. And uh, we'll take our time on it, getting it edited and getting it edited correctly. Uh, the CGI digital partnership, I think that Mrs. Reading will be sharing with this commission today. They are really needing the four topic uh subjects that we would like to see in that. And so if we can get that, then we can go ahead and move uh in that process and bring them in and have them getting, have them taking care of the video, getting scripts ready and uh so forth. So with that, thank you for allowing me to serve you. And uh, we'll try to answer any questions if this commission has it.
Any questions from Ms. Mar?
Chairman, if I may, in uh Ricky's report, we have CGI videos tour topics. And uh, as he mentioned, we need to select four uh topics and so uh if you all can uh look at those and either let us know, you know, today or sometime tomorrow, the topics that you all would like to see or if you all would like to discuss them now, but we need four topics for the video tour.
Thank you. How would the commission like to proceed? Now get back. It's the last two pages of the report. Quality of life and starts with, ends with community organization. And it's three, correct?
Four.
Four, four, okay. So four. All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mar.
Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. All right, next is you C and T director. Debbie, how you doing?
I'm good. How are y'all?
I'm pretty good.
Okay, um, we've ordered the five hundred KW generator for the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, that money was grant money from FEMA. Uh, it's gonna take months to get it in and then another month to get the automatic transfer switch. Their, just generators are hard to come by since uh Hurricane Michael, it's been rough. Uh. Twenty-fourth Avenue Wells been out of service for a month because we had a hole in the discharge pipe. I finally found a crew that's gonna come in Thursday or Friday. We're gonna fix that pipe, get everything back online hopefully by the weekend. If anything happens, it'll be Monday morning, but we've got to get, we've got a new flow meter. We're gonna have it installed at the same time. We'll have to get the man down here to calibrate it. But that's all looking real good. And after telling you before much, we're gonna flush fire hydrants. We started. So see water running across the road, please take care. Don't hit my folks. Then if you have any discolored water, just run your water for a few minutes and it shouldn't clear up once they get out of your neighborhood. But we've got to flush these hydrants. There's eight hundred and eighty of them by October day for ISO. So we're kinda under the gun this year. Anybody have any questions?
Um, any questions for our, just there? Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our department head goals and accomplishments. We'll move into agenda items. All right. First thing is, do we have a motion to go ahead and swear in Mr. Fairclaw?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we go ahead and swear in Mr. Fairclaw for Board of Zoning Appeals, Mr. Fairclaw. All right, uh. You can step up here.
Uh, don't move.
And basically, I think the best way to find this word, if I read and you just say I do and sign and give him his my friend. Gotta work for you.
Gotta work.
Okay, all right. All right, this is the oath of office. I solemnly swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Georgia. That I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the charter and orders of the city of Cordeal. That I will well, uh, I forgot that part. I will intrude upon the duties as board members of Zoning Appeals. That I am not the holder of any unaccountable public money due to this state or any public uh political subdivision or authority thereof. That I'm the holder, that I'm not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state or any foreign state which by the laws of Georgia I am prohibited from holding. That I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the constitution and laws of Georgia and that I will to the utmost of my skills and ability endeavor to promote the interest and profit of a said city without fear, favor, or affection of, so help me God.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fairclaw. Welcome to the Board of Zoning Appeals. You're a handcuff and then give it to.
It's my friend.
It'll be a sealed deal. And thank you for doing it for us. All right, um. So we have agenda item number two, considering approval event permit, food truck event Friday, September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Eleven a.m. to six p.m. Location would be the Community Clubhouse, um, one way east. All right, do we have a motion to consider and approve? I've been properly moved and seconded that we consider and approve on this uh event permit and discussion. All right, saying that, we shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
All right, probably does approve. Thank you. Motion carries, all right. All right, agenda item number three, considering approval of the fire department, uh, client agreement with better solutions training. Do we have a motion? It's been properly moved and seconded that we consider and approve this agreement. All right.
I want to let y'all know that I prefer as a uh a member to make it conform to Georgia law. Has changed the uh, the terms of the contract at all. It says when it uh will be uh, when it can terminate, council can terminate, commissioner, make it conform to Georgia law. Matter of fact, it says now it's interpreted according to Florida law. We always change this in Georgia. Just want to let y'all know.
Any uh public discussion upon that?
I sent it to you yesterday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Saying that, she'll proceed to vote. Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard? Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Alright, agreement approved, motion carries, alright, thank you for that, say your attorney, alright, you're welcome. Considering uh, agenda item number four, considering approve the request of items listed for the Police Department to be declared surplus. Do we have a motion for agenda item number four? It's been properly moved in second that we consider and approve, alright, any discussion? Seeing now, she'll proceed to vote, Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries, uh, items are approved for surplus. Alright, agenda item number five, considering approve the first reading of ordinance adopt pursuant to municipal home rule at the nineteen forty-five OCGA section thirty-six dash thirty-five dash one, do we have a motion for agenda item number five? Do we have a second for agenda item number five? Seeing now, uh, we shall proceed on, it died for lack of uh, a second, alright. Agenda item number six, considering approve the first reading of ordinance, amend the ordinance number uh, two twenty-three dash oh seven regarding Ethic Tribunal. Do we have a motion for agenda item number six? So. Alright, been properly moved in second that we consider and approve the first reading of ordinance, amend the ordinance number uh, two twenty-three oh seven, alright.
Mr. Chairman, once again, uh, there's a couple things the city manager I thought you might want to consider, you can read it the first time. As you know, we've uh, passed this on again the next meeting, so we've got plenty of time to amend it, but uh, uh, there was some discussion, I don't think we ever resolved exactly how they will be appointed. Uh, so uh, uh, you know, there's a suggestion that we, each commissioner would appoint one. On the other hand, uh, the number of the, of the uh, members, I've got three to five, you need to decide that. And then down the term, I put five years in here, uh, city manager and I had a discussion about that. Uh, and some other people have done two years, so if y'all would think about those things over the next few weeks, uh, we can amend the uh, ordinance and make it conform to what you want, make it so.
Alright, any discussion?
Yes, Chairman, I just think, believe there's five of us and one should come from each ward. And I think that's, that'd be the fairest way for, and have a five-member board and yeah, I think it'd be very diversified, I think.
That's where y'all want, you could do that today, yes, amend it, amend it on the floor.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Senator. Um. I think that we should approve what we had before, it worked for Wiggins, it worked for Wade and where that anti-democratic way of doing things needs to stop because it's a privilege when you have to get a majority vote in the city. The chairman is not just commissioned no matter how much you want him to be one or hurt at some point hopefully, uh, to be one, the chairperson. And when you have to go in, get a majority vote in the city, there are certain privileges, just like every other executive position. And and it's not about the current person that's sitting in this seat, it is about the respect of any person that comes after the person that's currently sitting in this seat or what have you. Um, as I said last minute, uh, that was a campaign, the script, the chair position for almost any authority that they had. But one day, one of you all may be chair. And as much as that goes, um, it's not okay to continue this path of just acting as if everyone is elected the same because they're not. Um, and I, I, I understand that, but the way the system was of the public specifically, no, it worked that way for the most part anyway. Um, it wasn't five, it was three. Um, and basically, uh, the way the procedure worked before, the chairman made two appointments on the three board. One appointment, non-contested, the chairman made, it happened. The second one, the chairman made, had to be approved by majority vote. And then the whole commission voted for it, so even with that setup, the commission still got to appoint the majority of the people on that tribunal. It, 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 it wasn't any type of thing where the chairman made all appointments. What happened was that two other people, when I was up for ethics, um, complaint, uh, they didn't live in the city and that was the first line of, of the, the section of the ethics tribunal. Now, that wasn't on me because I wasn't here and I didn't appoint them. And when I, you all know, and everybody know, because it was on the news all the time, um. But basically, I hammered, hammered, hammered in, read the charter, read the charter, read the charter, because if you did, we would never came to that. If the charter was followed, I wouldn't have been able to say, point out that them two people didn't belong because they didn't live in the city. Uh, for God's sake, why are the PO box listed, if, if they address on there, uh, and so either we're gonna respect the office of the chair and you don't have to respect me personally, but at least respect the position and the people that thought that the person that sits in this seat now or after me deserved those privileges that they voted to mend for, that's the way democracy works. And for us to, to try and say, well, every commission ought to get one, it, we don't get elected the same, that's the bottom line. And it's, it's continued disrespect, hopefully this commission is in a better place. And we'll do what's fair and right, it worked for every other chair before me. And there was no problems. Uh, and so, but um, that's where I stand on it, any other discussion on uh, this agenda item? Another ethics tribunal, number six.
Mr. Chairman, I think that the uh, going back to the original three, man is fine, uh, I was never favored from one person anyway. Uh, but I just felt that it was not a fair way of doing it, but I think if we stick with three, that, that would, I think that would be enough because that would uh, still do what we need to do, that would give a fair uh, evaluation of, of whatever the complaint might be at that time.
Thank you, sir, and also if, uh, ethics complaint is brought against myself or anybody else, that person does a mechanism for them to recuse themselves from it or what have you. So if you ever feel like, well, the chairman got a stat to his favor, the commission can recuse them. They can recuse them and, and pick others, uh, but there's always creative ways to do it. We can have, um, do the three and even uh, say the attorney correctly, am I wrong? We can have two people alternate just to call upon, if you have to recuse those two.
It says three to five.
Right, right, so if we have all three and if for some issue anybody appointed those three, I felt like it was stacked against me when I had ethics complaints and uh, I went up against it and, you know, um, but, you know, and I would have had to deal with it, um. If not knowing that, you know, two wasn't qualified to sit there, so that's the thing, um, but there's several ways we can do it. Um, and I think, any other discussion on it?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
I've had one for each ward, uh, and the chairman will be more beneficial for the city because you'll be representing the ward that you live in, you have a person from each ward and you know, even the city. I have the one here's what, random here, I don't mind, so we will select that person that we think were comfortable to handle all of our, in that way, it'll be a portion to you, myself and everybody else.
What happened in the case if you were for a ethics complaint and the person you appoint have to recuse themselves because you appointed them, then we have four people and then we don't have a lot of number.
You had to have alternate, one alternate to put the city.
So then there's six.
There's six then, have an alternate. Whichever one, whichever one, are we having alternate?
So now we're talking about nine people, we're talking about.
Just one alternate, if, 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 if you, I, I have a person coming to you, somebody sitting with the same person. If you're, if it's your, same time, then your person you recruit, then I all know who they are there.
Let me ask you, I understand, what's wrong with your mind with the three person way it was before, you sat on this board for.
Eighteen years and, and I can see sometimes it's time for changes. And I think, oh, when the people follow a, a complaint, but I will through mine.
The only thing is, we can only be for a change when it's about stripping the chairman of his power. When I put time and time and things on the agenda to improve certain areas of this city, it's not time for change then. But when it comes to, you know, let's strip this chairman of, you know, the privileges that rightfully earned. Everybody who wanted room for check got the room for check and the people decided, but, but I just cringe at the selective opportunities that we need to have change. And that's really not changed, that is, in my mind, that is uh, going backwards from progress. And, but, anyway, I yield, um, I'll stop there. Any other discussion on this uh, ordinance? Alright, seeing now, we shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Owens?
I guess the question is, are we actually gonna go forward because are we gonna change?
So, you can, you have a motion, change it on the floor right now and I'll put it in, I'll write it in the ordinance or you can uh, remember, we're gonna read it twice so you can amend it from the meeting to the next edition.
That's right, okay, with that thought, um, okay, yes.
Chairman, I just make a motion to amend the ordinance.
Well, it's a motion that he already voted yes on what we currently have, so I got the call that, let's see if it has a second then if not, we can go into what you want to do, uh, is that right, say the attorney?
Yes, sir, we'll do this and then, uh, I guess we would have an amended motion, uh, for the next one.
Alright, um, is it a second to Commissioner Owens, um, yevo? No second? He wrote yeah for Owens, yeah, yay two?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, alright, um. So, uh, Commissioner, um, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, second, not the second, sorry, it's complicated, um. Oh, yes, so you voted yeah, now I'm sorry. Easy, it's right now, easy, we probably add, add it later.
Oh, okay.
Okay, alright, and Commissioner Shepherd, yay, uh, Commissioner Rainey? Okay, and um, yay, so that approves it, um, ethics tribunal.
I'm sort of confused, I'm sort of confused, you carried the motion first, he motioned, I said it, man. Uh, uh, again, now with this stuff, you say, oh, you, it was voting, he said yay to the vote, I, I thought.
Vote, he made, he, I said, he made a comment first, which kind of threw, and I called a vote. He made a comment, which kind of threw me off too.
I think he voted for, so let's do this again because I, I, I.
Well, you can do it again, eh, well, well, hold on, hold on, hold on.
It wasn't.
Matt, you, you have authority to call it back, it ain't, it ain't like you don't have authority to call it back and repeal it, right? We probably have to go to the second one and then you can go back and repeal it, you already know on it.
Am I right, say the attorney?
Yeah, we still want it, then y'all go back and repeal it, it ain't that hard, like, but, just calm down, we gonna get through it. Alright, you alright? Okay, you alright, Commissioner Rainey?
Yeah, basically, it's just, we're going back to a tribunal, but we don't have it set up as to who's gonna sit on it yet. And that's basically what we just voted on, yes, to approve with no set way of how we're adopting them. We just, we just voted to bring it back, so if we all wanna just think about it to the next meeting, we can uh, we can adjust it, amend it at the next. So right now, we just have, we're not gonna have ethics officer, we're gonna bring it back to the tribunal.
That's right, alright, alright, so, motion carries, uh, approved, alright, to have a tribunal, alright, alright. Agenda item number seven, considering approve the second reading of ordinance section twelve dash fifteen of the uh, city court, uh, city cordial. Do we have a motion for agenda item number seven? It's been properly moved in second that we consider and approve the reading of the, um, the second reading, sorry, I should have said that first, um, of section twelve dash fifteen. Alright, um, any discussion?
Just have a question, um, then we had, had this conversation before and I see that, uh, the judge is here. Have you got a chance to look over this judge? And is there anything in there that you see that's been possibly?
Okay, anybody else have any discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, why the judge is here, because I know, uh, before when this process first started, uh, there was conversation around based on what is on this agenda that a person who is maybe in high school or, uh, trying to go into the college, enter into college or the army, that it would be on their record because there is nothing there to clear them, is that?
At that time, that's correct.
Okay, but it, has that been?
That's pretty correct.
Okay.
The language where he says, uh, and those such a fair, like, depending upon the term, clearly, we just open to, we, uh, cut, some proud division at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, any uh, other discussion? Seeing now, we shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries, uh, ordinance is approved and passed with the second read, alright. I think I've already had it figured that out, so let me just record it and say the attorney, city manager, alright. Now we're going to the city manager's report.
Good morning again. City manager's report for August twentieth, uh, twenty twenty-four. Will start out with some of the highlights, uh, since the previous, uh, city commission meeting and again on August eighth, we have the ministers meeting and Chief Algeirup was the speaker for the month. Um, in addition to that, we had a breakfast sponsor, uh, for the meeting. Uh, Faircount sponsored the breakfast and then we also had opportunity to show off the new, uh, tablecloth that we have, uh, for the city and so, again, thanks to Faircount for sponsoring the breakfast and for the ministers who continue to turn out each and every month. They are working well together, they have a lot of great ideas, uh, share events at their respective, uh, locations and so it, it's going really well. Believe it or not, city and county government, we do operate and work together well. And, uh, last week, we had an intergovernmental retreat and as you can see from the photos there, there was participation by all, uh, a lot was covered. No, that's not true, we know you will work, it's just at this particular time, you will just watch.
I was, I was.
Right, and you will watch those that, who were working, uh.
See, that's what a pitcher does, snaps at the time, because he worked the hardest.
I know.
The most and talked the most.
I, I know, I, I know, I thought about that, but I said, well. That's why I said that, uh, you know, everybody participated in the, in a governmental retreatment, uh, retreat. Uh, the work was definitely on the commissioners, both city and county. And UGA facilitated the retreat, but again, it was a very, uh, good retreat. A lot was accomplished and we're just excited about the opportunities that we have, so thank you all for that.
You can never go wrong, even by UGA. You can never go wrong, involve U G A.
Updates had announced this, as Steve mentioned, uh, the ARPA bids are due today at two P M. Um, the chamber is hosting a ribbon cutting on August twenty-first, Hurt Family Dentistry. Two oh one East Fourteenth Avenue at one thirty P M. The Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting, uh, will be held on August twenty-second in the courtroom at ten A M. And um, they will be hearing a request from Speedway regarding a sign for the location on Eighth. Eighth Avenue across from Loves, and then uh, there's another another ribbon cutting on August the twenty-third. Warren Outdoors, it was formerly Evans Outdoors, uh, the address is nine nine one, Highway two eighty west. And the ribbon cutting will be held at eleven A M. Just a few more upcoming events, uh, Sam Short Line presents murder mystery Dinner Train. On Saturday, September seventh, and then the Peanut Festival Train on Saturday, September twenty-eighth. Earlier, there was a question regarding equipment and other items related to sloths. And so just to give you an update, uh, the first payment on the ladder truck was made in July. Uh, Public Works is in the process of ordering the backhoe and the side arm more for uh, their department. Uh, I have requested a quote for vehicles from the police department, I have received those, and will be reviewing those. And then, as Debbie had in her report, she is working on receiving quotes for the UV disinfection system. For the wastewater treatment plant, so currently, those are the items that we are working on under the current sloths. A few other updates, uh, for the community clubhouse, uh, the committee met last Monday. And they continue to make progress regarding the community clubhouse, and so just for all would know. Uh, the cost for civic groups, nonprofits is fifty-five dollars for two hours. And then one hundred dollars for four hours, and that's for um, those groups, and then including those who would like to. Uh, rent a facility for re-cast, so those are some of the changes that were made. And then again, the city delinquent property tax sale is September third, which is the city's first meeting in September. So just wanna make you all aware of that as well, but again, if you have delinquent taxes, please come in and see us before that date. Um, because again, you know, we just wanna make sure that we all working together, uh, regarding uh, delinquent property taxes. And then a few additional items to report to you, we have received a request. To repaint the Cougar Paws on twenty-fourth of Martin Luther King. I don't have all the details because the questions I have that hopefully I will have an answer to, uh, soon is who will paint them? Will we have to close the road, uh, so those are some questions that we have, and I know they were on. Uh, twenty-fourth Avenue before, but that was so long ago, I do not know the process of how that was handled.
The Chili's did that as a fundraiser, uh, they sold, my days have had cheerleaders. They sold, those were, they sold those, like they, uh, people purchased them. And whatever, it might've been a little bit different on the main streets, but like the households, like if you're home, you wanna go out, the Chili's did that as a fundraiser. Uh, they essentially, they could come out to Chili's, like you can't.
And I'm, and I know with the Touchdown Club, that is part of one of the packets, if you want uh, Cougar Paw. But I'm not sure who painted those on twenty-four, that's the only question I have, who painted those? And if we have to close, I'm sure we have to close the road for that in how long, so, um. We'll, we we would get all that information, but um, we do have that request from um, the Touchdown Club. Regarding um, painting the Cougar Paws on twenty-four. And then, um, of course, we discussed the C G I digital topics, but then also, um. I know we had a work session scheduled for last week, there were, you know, we had to go back and forth, and so. Finally, we weren't able to come up with a new date, uh, but we do need to schedule a work session. I don't know how your schedule look next for next week, but we still have the comprehensive plan and the budget that we need to look at. I have information regarding that allied building, because we uh, will need to demolish that building. And um, and then some other, uh, those are the main two, but of course, I'm sure there will be others that come up. So if we can look at a date for the work session, because again, we need to um, approve a. A compensation plan for the employees, and of course, move forward with the budget based on the plan that is selected. So, you all wanna take a look at your calendars and then give back to me on that. And if possible, um, if we can schedule it for next week. And then, city offices will be closed Monday, September second, and observance of Labor Day. And that, that's all I have unless you all have questions.
Any questions for the city manager's report?
No questions for the city manager's report, but I do have a com- comment. Directly to Coles and you city manager, thank whoever who had, it is called, can't clean up. It is so much better, we have got so many complaints about that, that property, so it's someone that's cut the yard and cleaned up over there, and I thank you all.
Well, good, and thanks to Coles as well, because um, because they know I ride around the city, I take pictures and I. Send different items in, and so uh, I sent the picture to Coles, and and so they were able to locate the owner, so.
I know there was a need for a work session, but my question is, where are we with the budget?
With the budget?
Yes.
I need to know which plan we're going to adopt, and those numbers of, we will have those to you either today or in the morning. Because what we had to do was go back and of, not uh, for each. Plan, because we're looking at plan A, plan A modified, plan B, plan B modified, is put those in the spreadsheet. So you all can see how the numbers work out in regards to how much of the um. Fund balance we would need to use for that.
When you said a plan A, plan B modified, you're talking about the pay?
The four, yeah, the pay scales, the four different pay scales, we had to go and put that in.
Okay, are we looking, I thought we talked about A as well, doing the modify.
Well, that's, I said four, plan A, plan A modified, plan B, plan B modified.
Okay, got you, got you, okay, nice, um, I went to visit, um, the library and. They done a really nice job with what they have and kind of reorganize it to meet our current need. Or what have you, but there's some things that needs to be taken care of as far as. The treasure side and the smell, and being the older part of it, and um, also. Um, what the workers get paid is almost shameful. And um, I don't know if that's including us, or.
It's due to regional, it's a regional.
But we're for maintenance, yeah.
We we do support them in terms of maintenance, I do know, last year, we had a problem with bats. And we had those removed, because uh, Commissioner Shepherd and I went there for an event, and it was just terrible. And that was my first time ever hearing anything about bats, and so we did work to get those removed.
Right, right, okay.
And I will be meeting with, um, I think her name is Anne, uh, I don't remember, I I know the. The person changed there at the front desk, but um, because one of the sessions I attended, uh, at the convention was regarding libraries. And how to work with them and and make those work toward the community, and so we'll be meeting, I think her name is.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions for the city manager? Um, uh, commissioners, uh, have you all had an opportunity to check out the things for the uh, C G I thing? Okay, Commissioner Ray, have you checked, if we leave those with you, could you?
Yes, I will.
And see what we come up with?
Yes.
I'm gonna go sell it, all right, so you can do that, um, and give it to her, so she can move it up.
We can tell that out, but you know.
I'll, I'll get it.
Okay, all right, all right, there we go.
Thank you.
You are, all right, thank you, uh, Senator Turner, you have, all right, thank you, thank you for. Uh, getting those things together for us, all right, do we have any necessity for executive session? No, all right, all right, well, at this time, do we have a motion to overturn? It's been properly moved in second that we're during this meeting at ten oh three A M, again, uh, at ten oh three, all right? All fair, let me know about words for I, all right, you enjoy.